Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Stanton Planning Commission. The first item of business tonight is election of officers. So with that, I will open the floor for nominations for the office of chair for two thousand and twenty-five. Planning commissioners, do we have any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Hartless, I would nominate Jessica Robinson to be chair, please.
All right, we have a nomination for Jessica Robinson to be chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the floor for nominations. Planning commissioners, all those in favor of Jessica Robinson being the planning commission chair for two thousand and twenty-five, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
And thank you.
The next item of business on our agenda is the election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Judith Wiegand for vice chair.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the floor and ask the clerk to call the roll. I guess, excuse me, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. See, I messed up already.
It's your one for the year.
I know.
That's your one.
All right, turning to normal business, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Is there any changes? If not, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of the December nineteenth meeting as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the December nineteen, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kessinger.
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
I've never seen you since I wasn't here.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, turning to new business, item three A, it's the introduction of the City of Stanton's Capital Improvement Plan FY two thousand twenty-six, two thousand thirty. Jesse Moyers, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Stanton, will give the staff report.
Good evening to the members of the planning commission. I just wanted to let you know that I did not invite the department directors here tonight because they are all extremely busy, but if you have questions on any particular project, I can follow up with information or I can invite them to our February meeting where we come back and then we have the public hearing if you would like them to discuss any of the projects that they put forth.
Thank you.
First of all, I just want to give a thank you to the CIP committee. It is not just me. There are a lot of people that put a lot of work into this. A big special thank you to Lyle Hart. He does a lot of work, especially when it comes to water and sewer and a lot of input from him on the other projects as well. So this year, we've had a little bit of a redesign of the CIP plan. Each project will have its own little project sheet. I'll go through that in a second, just to make it a little more robust and a little more pleasing to the eye and capture their readers' attention. So the public hearing is scheduled for February twentieth. That's the next planning commission meeting, I believe, and then you will consider it that night. It gets introduced to the city council in February twenty-seventh with a scheduled adoption on April twenty-four along with the FY twenty-six budget. So this is an example of the project sheet. Thank you to Amanda Kaufman, who did the design of the project sheet. These are submitted by requesting departments. They start with a project description, history, key milestones, and operating budget impacts, if there are any, and then the strategic goal area it relates to and the plans that it impacts. Down at the bottom, we have the funding sources that are going to fund the project, and then there are cost categories along the bottom, separate out between category and fiscal years. So just as an overview, the five-year CIP is almost seventy-three million and is broken out with general fund at twenty-nine million, water fund at twenty-four, sewer fund at eleven point three million, stormwater at three point seven million, environmental fund at one point three, and schools at little under three million. You may notice that the parking fund is missing because the parking fund is having trouble sustaining itself with the revenues being sufficient enough to cover capital improvements. So the capital improvements are unfunded in this five-year CIP. So I want to start by talking about some of the new reserves that we are starting in FY twenty-six. The first one being Affordable and Workforce Housing Fund. This project or this reserve was recommended by Rebecca Joyce in the community development area. It will focus on the affordable housing and the workforce housing. It will assist in funding strategies from the Housing Work Group that was put together, and there is the proposed funding that she asked for with an increasing five thousand dollars every fiscal year over the next five fiscal years. And of course, there is a detailed sheet in the CIP that explains a little more about this particular reserve. Police Department relocation. This has been talked about for a while. So the proposal is that we start a reserve so that if a parcel of land becomes available and we can get to that point, that we'll have some cash on hand to be able to act on that purchase or make that decision. This will not in our immediate or near future, but it will give us a place to start with saving toward that that future project. They deal with a lot of overcrowding being in the basement of City Hall. The nine-one-one center is undersized, and they just need more space. So we have suggested that we start at a hundred fifty thousand a year, and we just start working toward that goal in the future. Same thing with Fire Station One. In both the PD and the Fire Station One, you will see them on the unfunded list for the general fund projects, just because it's been recommended that we build new spaces for them, but we just don't have the financial capacity at this moment to do that, especially with building the new J and D R District Courthouse. So this is Fire Station number one, suggested it funding it two hundred thousand dollars per year. Same concept, except it would be a renovation of the current building they are in, redesign of the roof to take it from the inverted design it has now to the typical design, with the possibility of maybe adding a third floor to give extra space to the firefighters and then any other needed improvements. Our goal, based on early estimates from a study that was done a few years ago and taking inflation into account, is about three to four million dollars. There are two other smaller reserves. There was one put forth by Chris Tuttle for golf cart replacement, sixty thousand to replace ten carts per year instead of having to do larger purchases at one time. He said that this is how they used to do it many years ago, and that way it wouldn't be such a financial impact to replace all of them at once. And then there's a Parks and Recreation Equipment Reserve to, as a way to save up for large equipment purchases in the Parks and Rec Fund. Oftentimes, he puts forth a request in the operating budget, and there is just no capacity to fund the replacements out of the operating budget, and that's why this reserve is being started. And then just to review some of the reserves that are already in our CIP, I wanted to point out the new sidewalk reserve, meaning new sidewalks. It's not a new reserve, but Rodney Rhodes asked that we increase it. Historically, we've been funding it at a hundred thousand dollars per year, and he would like to push those amounts up just to get us to the point where we can build up the reserves and do funding projects for new sidewalk installations. So his suggestion is three hundred thousand dollars for twenty-six, four hundred thousand dollars for twenty-seven, and then we would land at five hundred thousand dollars for twenty-eight, twenty-eight, nine, and thirty. Now, this is a plan. The funding would be contingent upon having the carryover funds to actually appropriate the money, and that is done by city council. So this is not a new reserve. It's been in our CIP, I think, for two years now. We've been funding it at six hundred thousand dollars a year. We proposed to drop that to three hundred thousand dollars a year, starting FY twenty-seven. Just because we added the police department and the Fire Station One reserves, we felt that we could drop this, we should drop this one down and enable us for the other two. We also, any interest that we're earning on our CIP funds, we are allocating to this project reserve, and so we have the money on hand to do the pool house replacement at Gypsy Hill, which we have a construction budget of two point three million, and then we have, I believe it's one point six million for the Gypsy Hill Park bathrooms, Montgomery Hall Park bathrooms, Montgomery Hall Park Pool House, and the Gypsy Hill Park on Palace renovations. These are the three reserves that have been in the CIP. It started with the FY twenty-four budget process. They're funded at two eighty-seven, two sixty-one, which was the equivalent of one penny on the real estate rate for the two thousand twenty-three assessments. It's stated that rate. We will discuss during council meetings whether we want to raise that to the current value of the penny, which will require us to come up with more money, or if we keep it at two eighty-seven, two sixty-one, this is for Union Town Neighborhood Improvements, West End Revitalization, and Library Improvements. And I hope I'm not going too fast. If you guys have questions, you just stop me.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yep.
Are we going to get a copy of the presentation after tonight?
The slides?
Yes.
Yes, I can absolutely. Tim, will you send those out? Yes, he can send those out to you.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
So the other continued reserves that we have are just the Fire Apparatus Reserve, self-contained breathing apparatus and cardiac monitors. All three of those are for the fire department. Paving for ineligible streets, that would also include parking lots. Public Works Equipment Fund, Public Works Building Maintenance Fund, Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Reserve, Greenways Project Reserve, informational technology, that is for mostly large server and equipment replacements, and then we have a small amount that is in our CIP for the Blue Ridge Community College Capital Reserve that they request each year. So then I want to move on to some, these are non-reserve type projects. Union Town Neighborhood Action Plan, there are several projects that you'll see in this CIP that relate to Union Town. The one I already mentioned, that's the annual reserve that's being funded at two eighty-seven, two sixty-one per year. The Union Town Survey is a hundred thousand dollars. That's being funded out of that reserve that I just mentioned. The Union Town Roadway and pedestrian infrastructure improvements, that is in the CIP, but there's no cost associated with it. It's kind of a placeholder until we get more information on what the projected costs are. But I just wanted the public and you to know that we are thinking of it. We have a placeholder for it. We just need more information on the proposed costs, which we hope to get maybe in the next month or two. Then we have a project for the Union Town Water Extension with design in FY twenty-six and construction in FY twenty-eight. Same with the water. There's one for water and one for sewer. We don't know the cost of that yet, but we're estimating four point one for each. We will have to adjust that as we know more.
Yeah, so that includes the design cost, too?
Yes, there's three hundred and seventy-five for each for the design, and then I don't have the construction cost, so I estimate it kind of using like the design is ten percent. Like I said, we'll have to adjust that once we know more. I believe we engaged Timmons in a study to help with, we're applying for a RACE grant to help with these projects, and they're supposed to gather us some cost information.
Here's another question. When, I should probably know this. When's the start of the fiscal year?
July first.
Okay, so FY twenty-six starts July one.
Starts for July one, two thousand twenty-five, and ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and I only know this because I'm only asking this question now because I was kind of keeping track of it myself. Wasn't the Union Town Survey's hundred thousand dollar budget supposed to be in fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
It is. I'm sorry.
So we're still funding it for next year?
That one is already encumbered and underway. Yes.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So some of the, like, we're just kind of...
I just wanted to show it here as kind of part of the package of what we have in the plan. What I do is kind of review twenty twenty-five and then project out the next five years after that.
Gotcha.
So it is in here. I'm just not going through all the projects that are twenty twenty-five. I just wanted to add it here because I was kind of capturing Union Town as a whole.
So, okay, okay.
Yeah, but it is, it is already underway. It was uncovered, I believe, in late fall or something.
Gotcha.
Churchville Avenue Streetscape. This was a project put forth by Rodney. We have been approved for VDOT revenue sharing, which is fifty-fifty match for the city and VDOT. I do believe it doesn't cover maybe moving the utilities underground, so there will be a little more expense on the city side. So this will include a brick sidewalk, placing the utilities underground, new lights, and additional landscaping, design in twenty-seven, construction twenty-nine. Estimated cost right now about two point one million. We do have some leftover money. I believe it was the Central Avenue Streetscape. We will first use that as our funding source, and then we will use some of the new sidewalk reserve money for our share of this. So this is some other general fund projects that were requested by departments. Gypsy Hill Park Power Hookups, a hundred thousand dollars, was requested by our Public Works Department, and this would help us provide electrical power to, for events that take part on Gypsy Hill Park. Crossing Way Park and Ride Lighting and EV Station. This is the new park and ride out in the crossing way, and this is to allow us to put lighting and maybe a charging station there for electric vehicles. West End Bus Shelters, there's more information on this on the project sheet, but this is, I believe, out of the West End plan to put additional bus shelters in the West End. Parks and Rec requested porch replacements for the Garden Center and the Montgomery Hall Park Admin Building for a hundred and twelve thousand. Lake Tams, the next two are also Parks and Rec, or actually all the rest of them are Parks and Rec. So Lake Tams, Spring House renovation in FY twenty-seven for sixty thousand, and renovation of the spring boxes in Gypsy Hill Park of a hundred and eighty. FY twenty-nine, they proposed to pave the Moxie Memorial Stadium parking lot, three hundred fifty thousand, and then Moxie Stadium renovations for twenty thirty, with the estimated cost of one point eight. So these are additional general fund projects, but these, they're being funded out of reserves that you saw earlier, but I just wanted to make you aware of the work that would be done with those reserves. Public Works Equipment Fund, replacement of right-of-way tractors for two hundred fifty thousand in FY twenty-six, replacement of one-ton work trucks in FY twenty-seven, a hundred and seventy thousand, bucket truck replacement of two hundred forty thousand in FY twenty-nine, and then a mini greater for three hundred thousand in FY thirty. With the Building Maintenance Reserve, the project's proposed there is to replace the roof on the salt shed for seventy-five thousand in FY twenty-six, the roof on the Park Maintenance Shop of two hundred thousand in FY twenty-six, roof replacement on the Health Department in FY twenty-six. This cost will be shared fifty-fifty with Augusta County and the City of Stanton because both of those parties are responsible for the building maintenance of that building. City Hall Roof Replacement of three hundred thousand in FY twenty-seven. Environment and Health Service Building, that is also a building over at the Health Department, that it will be shared fifty-fifty with Augusta County and the City of Stanton. And then Roof Recode Replacement on Booker T. Washington Community Center in FY twenty-eight. So that is all the general fund projects, and I'll move on to water fund unless you have any questions. Okay? So water fund, we have the annual water line replacements in there. Each year, we set aside four hundred and fifty thousand to help with those water line replacements. FY twenty-six, two point five million dollars for the Richmond Avenue Water Line Replacement Phase One. Reservoir lining and cover of one point five million in FY twenty-six. Franklin Hills Water Tower Number One Inspection and Repainting for two hundred ninety thousand in FY twenty-six. Replace a boom truck. That's actually half of it. The other half you'll see in the sewer fund because they share that truck fifty-fifty in twenty-six. That's the Union Town Extension that we talked about with design in twenty-six, construction in twenty-eight for four point one million. Gateway Data Collection Expansion, two hundred fifty thousand for FY twenty-six. That are, that's readers that will read meters. We already have seventy-five percent coverage in the City of Stanton. This would be the remaining twenty-five, which it's harder to reach locations for the remaining towers, and they would need some assistance putting those towers up. And once they're up, we can bring the whole city online, and then customers can see their usage on hourly basis, and they will be alerted if they have leaks, things like that. FY twenty-seven, a little over a million dollars for the Shutterly Mill Water Tank Inspection and Repainting. Phase Two of Richmond Avenue is a big project, ten point six million dollars with design in twenty-eight, construction in twenty-nine. Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacement, a hundred and ninety thousand in FY twenty-nine, and then Water Treatment Plant Filter Rehab, one point two million in FY thirty.
Yes, you know there are approximate limits of phase one and phase two on Richmond Road?
I do not, but I can find out for you, unless they're in the project sheet. Yes, I think there are more details on my project sheets later in the, in the back of the CIP. That is the reservoir. It's out of Public Works. Yes. All right, so sometimes what's not in the CIP or what's not funded in the CIP is also very important to keep in mind, and we have some major water infrastructure that we need in our future that is currently unfunded, with the biggest being the North River Pipeline Project. Lyle has it broken down into three phases there. The North River Upper Tunnel and Upper Raw Water Pipeline and Repair Replacement, eleven million. North River Central, raw water pipeline replacement, twenty million, and then the lower is ten and a half million. Of course, these are very rough estimates at this point.
And is this the pipe that has the hundred-year life?
Yes, it is.
Where are we at on the hundred years?
I think we're probably past it.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Yes. Yes, and at these costs, it's not in our near future, but we want to keep it in front of everybody to make sure that, like, we know that it is something that we will need to eventually take care of. And then the fourth one is just finding a new water source with maybe a deep well, almost eight million dollars. And that's just for future planning purposes. Sewer projects, we allow two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the annual sewer line replacements. FY twenty-five, the design has already started on this with construction in twenty-six for the New Hope Road Sewer Project, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. FY twenty-six, sewer truck replacement of two hundred thousand. FY twenty-six, Commerce Road Phase Three, nine hundred and fifty thousand. This is the Union Town that you saw earlier, designed in twenty-six, construction in twenty-eight, four point one million is our estimate we're using at this point. This is the Union Town that you saw earlier, uh, designed in twenty six, construction in twenty eight, four point one million is our estimate we're using at this point. The other half of the boom truck that you saw in water, a hundred and seventy five thousand FY twenty six. Lewis Creek Sanitary Sewer Phase Three and Four, three million dollars, design in twenty seven, construction in twenty eight. FY twenty nine Locust Avenue Sewer Replacement, nine hundred thousand. FY thirty Sherwood Sherwood Avenue Sewer Relocation, two hundred and fifty thousand. Moving on to the Environmental Fund, the only project we have there is an annual replacement of our trash trucks. The majority of our capital that is in our environmental fund is in the Augusta Regional Landfills CIP, not the City of Stanton. Stormwater FY twenty six Asylum Creek Stream Restoration, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Wharf Parking Lot Study, this is just a study to see the possibility of daylighting the wharf parking, the creek that runs under the wharf. FY twenty six, Lake Tams Monitoring System, one thirty one, seven sixty. FY twenty seven, a little over one point three million dollars for the Stanton High School Stream Restoration. And then FY twenty eight is the Green Hills Industrial Park Basin Restorits for one point, almost one point four million dollars.
Where's the stream at the high school?
I don't know, but I could find out that.
It's on the north. It's on the north side between the high school and Mountain View.
Uh, I'm going to move into the Stanton Schools portion of the CIP. They have an annual bus replacement of one twenty five. They have a project for Ware Fence Extension, two hundred and forty seven thousand FY twenty six and twenty seven. Shelburne Old Gym HVAC, four hundred thousand in FY twenty six. FY twenty six, the Stanton High School Dock Extension, fifty five thousand. FY twenty six, the Shelburne Track Fence for fifty five thousand. They have Chromebook Replacements, three hundred and eight thousand scheduled for FY twenty seven. And then a planned one point six million dollars in FY twenty nine, of which seven hundred and fifty five thousand remains unfunded at this point. Dixon School Generator, a hundred and twenty five thousand FY twenty eight. And then adding a bathroom at the Stanton High School Track, two hundred thousand in FY twenty nine.
Jesse, do you know why the Chromebook replacement would go up five fold two years later?
So this is all scheduled replacements based on when they actually bought the Chromebooks. I'm guessing it's maybe a five year life, but I'm not sure. We'd have to talk to Tom at schools.
It's just seems like that would be sort of more of a steady annually kind of a replacement, but.
So these.
Yeah.
These Chromebooks were bought with grant money, um, coming out of when the pandemic was happening because a lot of kids were learning at home. And so these are the replacements of those particular Chromebooks after their normal life is extended. So, um, my hope is that when the time comes to actually replace them, that the maybe the state will have additional grant money available to help with that technology, but we will have to kind of wait and see.
Thank you.
So these are projects that are funded with their reserves. The Roof Recoding, Bessie Weller, a hundred and fifty thousand FY twenty six. Shelburne Middle School is done in sections, section one FY twenty seven for two hundred thousand FY twenty nine for a hundred thousand. Dixon School in FY twenty eight for a hundred and forty and Stanton High School for three hundred thousand in FY thirty. Now, some may wonder why we have to recode Stanton High School after it was just built because we asked that question. And it's to maintain the warranty that came with the roof when the high school was built. I believe it was, you have to recode it every ten years, I believe. Parking Lot Repaving, um, the plan is to do McSwain Parking Lot Extension FY twenty six. So that's not a repaving, that's an actual extension, a hundred and seventy five thousand. Repave Shelburne Middle School of two hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty six. McSwain Elementary Repaving of the existing parking lot, a hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty seven. Ware Elementary in FY twenty eight for a hundred and seventy five, Bessie Weller Elementary, one seventy five in twenty nine, and then Dixon School in FY thirty for a hundred and seventy five. They also have two more reserves that I just wanted to bring to your attention, Furniture and Equipment Reserve, funding at twenty five thousand dollars per year. And the Vehicle Reserve at twenty five thousand dollars per year. Currently, they don't have any proposed purchases. Out of these two reserves, just wanted to let you make you aware of them. And then right now we do show some significant unfunded school projects that I need you to be aware of. That's the Shelburne Collaborative Space, seven point five million FY twenty six. The renovation of S V Cow, which is the VCTC Governor's School Building. I guess this would be phase two of it because they currently just did a phase one renovation, a little under ten million. That would be Stanton Share. And then Operations Facility that they're proposing FY twenty nine for thirty million. And that is all I had to present to you. If you have questions, I can take them now. You can always follow it with me or Tim through email.
Kind of nebulous question of the unfunded items, whether it's, you know, water or school or whatever. I I, you know, you can, I guess, look in your crystal ball all you want, but when when do priorities on those change such that they need to be funded? You know what I mean?
So North River, the priorities kind of changed because of the Gardner Springs Project we did. That kind of took a little pressure off of North River Pipeline. So that's why that one is currently on the unfunded list. And it all is driven by the Director of Public Works. If he is pressing the issue, then we will have to find a way to do it. Which will most likely be a debt issuance through the Water Fund, but hopefully by the time we get to that point, there will be some capacity filled that will be available for that.
Okay.
As far as on the school side, it's really a question of. It's a lot of things. It's what real estate tax rate do you want to charge your citizens? How much debt do you want to take out? And just the timing of all that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You go ahead. Okay, I just wanted to thank you for the change in the format. I thought I really liked the way this, it was so much easier to follow where it was going with the individual sheets and with the placeholders and so on. And before it's been fine, we could work our way through, but this makes it a lot clearer and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much because it's taken many, many hours.
I'll bet it is.
And halfway through, I regretted it.
You have all the hard work's done now.
I know, it should be easier next year, right?
Yes.
No, absolutely. That was, that was one thing I wanted to say was I, it makes it much easier for us laymen.
And if you ever have any suggestions on how to make it better, I am welcome to. I'm open to suggestions.
It's going to be helpful to us because when we've had the West End Plan and the Union Town Plan and all of those, we can point individuals if they start saying, where's our water and sewer money? Or whatever it might be, we can say, well, go look at the Capital Improvement Plan online and look for just type in Union Town Sewer Extension or something, whatever the.
And another one that is important to a lot of our residents is North Madison Street Improvement, but I did not do a slide on that because that is actually FY twenty five.
It's underway.
It's underway. Um, you will see sheet, a sheet on that that describes what work is being done there with the cost estimates. So that is just why I did not do a slide because a lot of the slides were just focusing on the five year plan and not what's currently going on. But that is one that I know is important to a lot of people. It's important to us and it is in there.
And I know it's malleable, but the North River Pipeline, I am curious as to sort of where we are with that and when we need to seriously start looking.
I looked it up. I think it was completed in nineteen twenty six, so we're right there.
Okay.
And I can get a better, a detailed explanation from Dave Irvin, the Director of Public Works. I don't think I will do it just trying to repeat what he told me, but so I will get more information from him.
And those are definitely estimates. I mean, they could get.
Oh, yes.
Twenty.
Oh, right, right, right.
Twenty, thirty years past its lifespan.
As you know, it goes through a mountain too, so it's not going to be an easy task at all. I have not heard that. I'm not, I've not heard that, so I'm not sure.
And my last question, the Parking Fund, I know you noted that it's gone. So what expenses are we still incurring from that?
We don't have any current capital expenditures because they were both redone not too long ago. We do have some maintenance expenses that are coming out of the Parking Fund. We just don't have any major capital expenditures currently scheduled.
Okay.
And as far as I'm aware of, when I asked, there weren't any needed at this point. It kind of just recommended to have a certain funding amount in case we needed it. But it's just the funding's not there to support it.
Any other questions? Again, thank you very much and we look forward to next month.
Yep, I will be back next month and we will have a public hearing and we can go any, over any additional questions.
Okay, well, speaking of public hearings, next item on our agenda is a public hearing and consideration of a request by Michael Gutzler. I hope I pronounced that right and Prospect Village LLC for a special use permit at two seventeen West Beverly Street under the provisions of Stanton City Code SCC eighteen point five five oh six oh three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a request by Mike Gutzler and Prospect Village LLC for a special use permit to have living and sleeping quarters on the first or the ground floor of two seventeen West Beverly Street. This property is located on the north side of West Beverly in the block between Washington and Lewis Streets. The building was constructed in eighteen eighty seven by the then town of Stanton. And its original use was the Stonewall Jackson Primary School. School closed in nineteen seventy three. And uses within the building have changed many times over the years, but have been commercial for the most part. Mr. Gutzler has contracted to purchase the property and that purchase is contingent upon the approval of this special use permit. The property consists of a building approximately thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet. And it sits on a lot that is roughly twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight square feet. It's zone B one local business district. Residential uses are permitted on the second and third floor by right. But residential use is not permitted on the ground floor of buildings in a B one. Except with a special use permit, which has necessitated this request. Surrounding zoning to the south and east is B one local business. To the west, it's also B one local business. To the northwest and north is R four high density residential. Surrounding uses include two churches. A mixture of single family and multifamily as well as some commercial uses. And I should indicate, I should also note that the property is located in the Newtown Historic District. Our recently amended parking requirements for multifamily uses establishes a requirement of one space per every studio efficiency or one bedroom unit. The applicant proposes twenty six studio apartments. Parking requirements also require one guest space for every ten units. So twenty six units plus guest spaces would require twenty nine total parking spaces. The existing parking lot does not have twenty nine parking spaces and Mr. Gutzler has proposed to relocate or rebuild the retaining wall behind the building and expand that parking lot to to obtain that extra parking. I would note that relocation of that retaining wall and expansion of that parking lot may require a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. It's up to the zoning administrator to make that determination and it's based upon whether any portion of the wall or the parking lot could be visible from the public street. There also would be a site plan required for the expansion of the parking lot. Where would ensure that setbacks are met, minimum sizes are met for parking spaces. I would also look at stormwater management for the new parking lot. There may be some landscaping required. So there's, this special use permit is just step one in a multi-step process to get this, to get this project approved. The city's comprehensive plan, future land use map designates this area as neighborhood residential. This designation is reserved for older neighborhoods, which can be characterized as large housing units on small lots. One of the policies of the designation is to encourage the development of infill housing units that are compatible with the existing facilities and structures. Staff always gives very careful consideration to request for residential use on the ground floor of buildings and business districts, giving up commercial space on a ground level of a building on Beverly Street. So close to downtown is not a practice that the city wants to encourage. However, commercial enterprises in this building have consistently struggled over the years, which suggests that residential use may be the highest and best use for all floors of this building. Given the large size of the building, nearly fourteen thousand square feet, multifamily use is the most feasible residential use. The staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend approval of the special use with a series of conditions. They are that no more than ten dwelling units are permitted on the ground floor of the building. Certificate of appropriateness may be required for any change in appearance to the exterior of the building, which can be seen from the public street. And that may include alteration and relocation of the existing retaining walls. And expansion of the parking lot, the zoning administrator will make the determination if a COA is required. A site plan will be required for the relocation of the retaining wall and the parking lot expansion. Special use permit. Or the special use must comply with all provisions of Stanton City Code eighteen point one two five minimum off street parking requirements. There are twenty six dwelling units proposed, however, total number of dwelling units permitted will be limited based upon the number of parking spaces that could be provided on site. Parking provided on other properties or on-street parking may not be counted towards for residential uses. And that's a requirement of our zoning code. The zoning code says that for residential uses, all parking must be located on the same property as the residence. This area is not in the city's downtown parking exempt area, so it is required to meet all of our parking requirements. Finally, a building permit will be required for a change of use and all work must be in compliance with the provisions of the Virginian Uniform Statewide Building Code. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. When you conduct a public hearing, I believe Mr. Gutzler is here tonight and I'm sure he has some comments that he would like to make.
Any questions for staff? I have one. You noted that since the school closed in nineteen seventy three, so fifty years now, that different commercial enterprises have been attempted. Do you know, can you sort of, in recent history, do you have any knowledge of what the?
I don't. I didn't think about it till you just asked the question, but I could have asked the Commissioner of Revenue for a list of business licenses that have been issued. I know that there have been a number of businesses that have come and gone on that first floor. Some restaurants over the years, some offices. But I don't have any hard data in front of me.
You, do you know the current uses in the second and third stories?
The last time I was in the building, it's been a few years, the majority of those floors were either vacant or used for residential purposes.
As noted, this matter and the next one are public hearings. Once I call the, open the public hearing, we'll invite the applicant to come up and speak. We ask the applicants to limit their comments to ten minutes. And then after that, we'll allow the public and anyone that's on Zoom and anyone here to make comments. And we ask that you limit those comments to three minutes. Also, anyone who comes up to speak, if you could give your full name and address, please. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having me here this evening. Uh, thank you to Tim and the rest of his team to help with this process. Uh, been fantastic as usual. My name is Mike Gutzler. I currently reside in Fairfax, Virginia, but spend a great deal of time here in Stanton. And I don't have anything additional to add. I added with the application some potential outline and floor plan that came with the space. And I think it's going to be a fantastic use of the building in addition to providing fantastic. in addition to providing fantastic opportunity for residential in a close proximity to downtown walkable Beverly Street Business District. And so we're excited about the project and hope you are too.
I shouldn't have any questions?
May I? Yes, thank you. The first question I had was if you would, you're not familiar to us here, having come before us before, like some of our other developers are. And I'd just like to ask you or invite you to tell us a little bit more about your background and anything else you've developed, and historic buildings, large, not historic buildings, whatever, please.
Yeah, this, I think Scott knows me, but maybe anybody else does. So my name is Mike Gutzler. I've been investing in Stanton since 2013. The first property we acquired was on Calorama, historic building on the left-hand side of the street. And it was just a residential space that we rehabbed. And then our second acquisition was the Clock Tower Building right across the street where we renovated all the apartments that were in incredible despair when we acquired that building in 2018. And then we did a rehab for a project in the West End that was on West Beverly Street. And then, and this is, this is me and the folks that I work with, under different LLCs, of course. And then we acquired the building at 23 East Beverly Street, formerly the Emilio's Building, or Emilio's Restaurant, where we transitioned the Pompeii Lounge into residential spaces and maintained the ground floor and the second floor to be a restaurant space for Queen City Bistro that currently occupies that space.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here in the audience who has comments on this matter? Please come up to the podium and give your name and address.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Geiger, and I live at 220 West Frederick Street. I live kind of across from Stewart Hall School, actually the parking lot next to Stewart Hall School. And I am directly behind 217 West Beverly, where I also teach at the art school there when I can. The first question I have, which I don't want to use up my three minutes, maybe you can answer it when I'm done, is will this building conversion have to follow the same strict historic guidelines that the rest of us have to follow? Or will it gets a little bit of a pass because of all the income it might generate? I'm a little worried about that because I find this one of the most charming buildings in the downtown. And I would hate to have it be, for safety purposes or new regulations, be kind of tinkered with. So right below my backyard is this parking lot we're talking about. And there's a green space full of what looks like at the moment scrub. And I'm sure it probably, to a passerby, is like, what difference does that make? But we've lived here for eight years and been slowly trying to work on it, even though it's not our property, because what it actually is, is a orchard that's been overgrown because the current owner's not doing anything at all. And I don't, you know, it's our choice, but, but just, I'm just thinking about that. Green spaces to me are very important to dense downtown areas. And like, think of that garden, Memorial Garden, behind the Stanton Augusta, you know, Fine Arts Center is a real treasure. It's a real oasis. I mean, I walk through that, you know, alley all the time just to pass it when I take a walk. So I'm just, one thing about, I mean, forget the horticultural part of it being an orchard. That buffer, that's a buffer. That green space is a buffer between us residents and the main street of Beverly Street. So my backyard experience is going to be very different if that's suddenly a parking lot with 20 cars in it, coming in and out at night with their lights on. And besides that, all, every light in the building on at night with people living in it, glaring into our backyard, our back porches. So that's going to make our living experience, our quality of life, lower. And if I don't like this kind of urbanization in my back little private yard space, I'm just worried about what are people, if I go to sell my house, potential buyers? Are they not going to like it either? Is this going to reduce the value of my home? Because it's going to kind of lose some of the privacy, some of the peace and quiet aspect to it, and the people all around me on that strip of the street. Sorry. So that's really what I'm thinking about. The privacy issue, the quality of life. I mean, yes, I could put up a huge fence to block the view or a huge ever, set of evergreen trees, so I never see that building again. But that's kind of my view. That's what I, part of why I bought the house. And one of my favorite parts of my house, because it's so close to Frederick Street, it's really tight up in the front, which gives you a different vibe when you're on the front porch. It's, it's nice and friendly, and I talk to people, and that's fine. But I like the back because it's my escape from all that public, you know, that's where I can be private. But now, you know, there's going to be a bunch of people living in brightly lit apartments, glaring, you know, not realizing I can see everything you're doing. And you're probably not going to put up, you know, curtains because most people don't think that they're being watched, and it's just going to be awkward.
Well, thank you, and we'll sort of collect the questions for staff and go over those at the end. Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Dana Quellen, and I'm the current Board President of the Beverly Street Studio School. We're located at 217 West Beverly Boulevard. We moved there about 12 years ago. Currently, on average, we generate about $120,000 in revenues per year. This is pre-COVID. Since then, it's been a little changed. Our current enrollment is around 450 students annually. Forty-six percent of the enrollment is our Stanton residents, Rockbridge, and I think Bath County. And 25% of our enrollment is from Charlottesville, Virginia. So we love this building. The building has a lot. It's very old. I had no idea. It was 1887. So I guess in terms of continuing on with this project, we have a school here that we're going to have to relocate. And I guess what I would ask the commission would be to think about that in terms of another school location, given the fact that if this project does go through, we need a new home. Thank you.
Good evening, and members of the, I guess it's the planning board. My name is Leslie Kip. I live at 16 Church Street. So if I walk out the front of my house and I look to the left, I look directly at this building. And what I'm going to say next, this is kind of extemporaneous because I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. But my initial reaction is that the additional 10 units on the first floor is a bit of a stretch. And I am skeptical that the parking is going to be adequate. Now, the reason I say this, because there's a tremendous temptation on the part of people maneuvering into those tight spaces to basically park on the street. And one of the things I would ask this commission to consider strongly is that the area has a lot of what would, I would call surge parking in that there's Trinity Church right across the street. There's all sorts of activities in addition to the Sunday church services that go on there, including the Stanton Music Festival. And so I think that the parking is, there's going to be overflow parking, and that's going to interfere with many of the activities that go on at the church. In addition, that particular area gets a lot of overflow parking every time you close a street off or you have an event in downtown Stanton, such as, what do they call it now, the Mischief and Magic Festival? And so the, I would ask you to take a very serious look at the addition of these 10 additional apartments because I do think, I suspect, that you can have your planning guidelines, but as any engineer will tell you, you, you plan for your surges, be it an electrical surge, be it, be it a surge in the need for water in the morning or whatever. Be it a highway, you plan for maximum capacity. And my suspicion is that this particular project is going to put a lot of stress on the ability to handle those parking surges. After I've thought about this a little bit more, and if you have more meetings, I'll probably be back. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Robert Stewart. I live at 220 North Madison Street. And I've been associated with the Beverly Street Studio School for about 30 years. And one thing that wasn't mentioned at the beginning for that building is that the school has been existing for about more than 30 years, like 33 or 34 years. So it's got quite a history there. Would you all mind if I read a statement from my colleague at the Beverly Street Studio School, Janley Jaggar? Just takes two minutes to read this.
No, you can use your three minutes as you like.
Thank you, thank you. This is this letter I received email a couple of days ago. Apart from the fact that the Beverly Street Studio School would lose the perfect place to reside, the notion of adding this large amount of housing and its demanded parking spaces would be highly detrimental to the way the downtown area is utilized. I note that the city has already permitted expansion of other large buildings into housing facilities, such as the steam laundry, the corner building on New and Johnson, the apartments of Dixie on West Beverly, and no doubt more. Any developer who can realize taking this building and converting it into a cash cow for personal gain is not invested in Stanton. They are clearly investing in personal wealth and have no true concern for this historic city. The building has the potential to retain its essential quality and gainfully manifests itself as a significant benefactor to many causes. The building needs tender loving care to renovate and retain its essential essence and historical significance while simultaneously providing a venue for alternatives, such as the art school, the therapist, other small businesses that suit the thriving historic downtown district. I don't know what else to say or who else to send this to, but please, if you care about your city and this downtown area, do everything you can. I'll stop there for a minute. My main subject matter really is what brings people to Stanton. It's cultural, really, I think, culture and restaurants. And this Beverly Street Studio School is a cultural part of Stanton. And I'm just concerned that we may be pushing that out of the downtown area and making it harder for it to exist. So I do think culture is important. It's important for the economy of Stanton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Kip. I live at 16 Church Street. I will be quite brief. I basically want to reiterate what Liz and Robert have said before me. This is an historic district. We, we take a great deal of pride in our historic districts, and the building is especially important. That's, that's just one point. So to maintain the character of the building, to not, what can I say this? Make maximum use of residential space, which could entail a lot of compromise. It doesn't seem wise when, when one thinks of the whole vision for Stanton. And as Robert said, the cultural element is important. And that school has been there for a long time. A comment was made earlier that the rental potential is minimal. But I wouldn't, we've been here for 12 years, and yes, businesses will come and go, but the space never stays empty for long. It's filled now, as far as I know, seems to be. I mean, one business leader, another one will come in. So it's not as if the building is standing idle and deteriorating. How much more important it would be and how much better it would be to choose a building that is deteriorated, like the Business School on, on West Beverly, and, and save that? And that could be, and lots, there's lots of parking there. And that could be a win-win. I think this building, this historic school from 18, what, 87, is, is just too important as an historic structure to be overly capitalized on, shall we say. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our public conference.
And if you want to hold, just as, I want to hear if there's anybody else that wants to speak first. Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to speak?
I have a comment, and it's hard for me to get up there. Did you, did we ever consider expanding the boundary of the downtown?
Oh, no, don't.
This is to, to address the, the parking problem?
Okay, and I'll add it, and for anyone who couldn't hear, the question was if we had ever considered expanding the downtown parking district.
Right next to it now, right?
And I'll add that to the questions for staff. Anyone else in the audience? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then I'll invite the applicant back up if you have a few additional comments, since you were brief to begin with.
I can try and answer some questions here. Just want to take a moment and thank the community of Stanton and local residents to be here and voice your, your thoughts. I want to say that my wife and I and our, our team are committed and devoted to Stanton. The investments we make are long holds, and so we are investing in the town and continue, will continue to do that. So we are not some cash-focused investor that's just going to take money out of this building. Secondly, I've spoken with Frank Strassler at multiple occasions about the building, the facade and everything around it. It is going to stay as is, of course. You all know that, that you have a serious roof issue in that building, and the current owner has no intentions of fixing that or doing anything with it, and is part of the reason why they're trying to offload it, in my opinion. I don't, that is not their words. So that is a significant expense. And of course, working with Frank, it has to go back as is. So it'll look identical in a historic manner, as it should. Speaking to Ms. Elizabeth's point, I believe, if I'm correct, the green space that's in between her property and this property is, if, if it is an orchard, it does have some vegetation there. And from what I've been told from meeting with several contractors and estimators about moving the retaining walls, some of that vegetation is actually contributing to the deterioration of the existing fractured retaining wall that's there that should be replaced anyway. So their recommendations are to, to clear that so that those roots do not continue to cause problems for the existing wall, let alone putting in a new one, which would be an improvement to the space.
No, I'm sorry, we, we can't ask questions from that.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer her question.
We just, for the procedure of the meeting, we can't have people speaking from that.
So the, the issue with the parking is, is that if we want to have parking facing, if we want to have enough parking, you have to put in enough spaces so that the cars can park facing the retaining wall and facing the building. And just because of the requirements for the size of the spaces that are outlined in the code, the space in between is just too narrow. And so we are still waiting for a survey to say how deep into that. how deep into that current retaining wall we need it to go. It's not significant, but there is a structure on Elizabeth's property. And so we need to have that wall engineered so that her structure maintains its secure footing in its current space. So like, that's, that's on us to do it. We're, we're doing that as best as we can, working with those engineers. I wanted to also emphasize that the stress parking issue that was brought up, the fact that you're retaining all residency parking on the property behind the building, I think is an asset to adding additional units here, because they are off the street and they're not trying to find parking in these other neighborhoods where people live. So having all that parking onsite is a, is an add to this, to this particular project. And of course, if you would like to consider extending the distance to the downtown district to have access to parking downtown, that'd be great. We're like 20, like 30 feet short of being that distance. So I would, I would applaud that opportunity. And then we don't have to deal with any of these retaining wall issues or parking or anything like that. People can park at the, at the lot right behind this building. So I hope that answers most of the folks that had brought up questions today. And to reemphasize that, although I don't live here full-time, I think this is a great building, a great space. And to have another 26 potential people living this close to downtown would be awesome. And everybody could have Elizabeth's experience living so close. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
All right. All right, anybody further? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Before I go through the questions raised in the audience, does anybody else have any questions for staff?
I had a couple. Tim, do you know how many existing parking spaces are on the site?
I do not know that answer. I know that we did an evaluation several months ago. The zoning administrator did, but we, we're not certain exactly how many spaces there are. Because the striping.
Sure, sure.
Isn't intact and.
Is there, is there any concern with circulation? Because it looks, I'm just looking at street view. And from, from memory, the only entrance into that back parking lot is a very narrow sliver beside the building. Is there any, is there any concern with? I mean, that's how it sits today, but with one-way traffic or, or, you know, just circulating access into and out of that, you know, new or existing parking area?
It is a very tight little tunnel, almost, that you have to go through between the building and that retaining wall. It was an existing situation. We assume that the folks who lived in that building would be familiar with that tight area and that we didn't foresee it being an issue.
So there's, there's not, we don't currently have a handle on number of potential units that could be built on the second and third story by right. Is that correct?
No, we don't. The, the business regulation do not have a density limit on the residential. When we do a building code review, when the building permit is applied for, there are some minimum spaces, minimum size requirements for bathrooms. But for a studio apartment, where the living room, kitchen area is all one large room, there aren't a lot of, of minimum size requirements. Basically, it's just the bathroom. So, so on the second and third floor, there really are no limits to how many units could be there.
I was gonna say, Scott, just looking at the aerial photograph, I'd tell you there's a dozen spaces, just kind of based on how the cars are parked. There's about four, maybe five on the side of the building and seven or eight on the back side of the building. Get you a plus or minus.
And it's also my understanding that if, depending on exactly how much extra space they might be able to get in back, that if they can't get 26 spaces or however many the total number they'd need for the 26 units that they're talking about, that they would have to do fewer units. They can't have more units than they have parking for.
That's correct. We would not be able to issue a building permit unless there was adequate parking, at least one space per unit plus one guest space for every 10 units. So the parking is going to limit how many units we could approve through site plan and building permit.
Okay. And I just want to mention that I have seen and looked at the diagram for the units on the first floor, and I was surprised at so many. I noticed that a couple, I've been in a number, many of those spaces. I've taken classes with BSSS. And the big studio areas are basically cut in half. And I'm concerned that we're talking about a whole bunch of very small units. And I'm, it seems to me that it would be easier if they were, if there were fewer of them. So just for what it's worth, that's my take on that. I think they could make much better use of that first floor in a way that would be much more attractive for the people who are living there. We don't really have much say about that, but I don't, I didn't like the look of it.
Tim, we don't, I know our zoning code specifies the standard parking lot space of 18 feet by nine feet, but we don't have, we don't have a standard, a minimum width for travel aisles in our zoning ordinance?
Yes, we don't have a minimum travel aisle width in the zoning code. Typically, the city engineer uses accepted standards. So for a two-way traffic with parking on both sides, we generally would look for a 24-foot wide traveling.
Has the, has this been run past the fire marshal? Do they have any concerns with, if it's a residential use needing, there's no way they would be able to get a fire truck to the back of that building?
Yeah, they, they can't get a fire truck out there. They would have to lay hose around the building. And they did review the special use permit. Didn't have any comments. That's not saying they won't have comments when they review a site plan. But they didn't at this particular one.
So does that mean that if it really became a problem for the fire department, that this would either have to be dramatically changed somehow or not go forward at that point?
During site plan review, if, if, depending on what kind of changes are proposed to the wall and how, where it would be moved, there may be an opportunity to widen that access point. But as it currently is, the fire department did not have any, they did not voice any issues when they reviewed the special use permit. So I'm gonna, I don't want to speak for the fire chief or the fire marshal, but, but they had their opportunity to raise a concern about the narrow space, and they did not raise any concerns.
Going back to the parking, with first floor business, what is the parking requirement?
This is an existing commercial building, so businesses on the first floor are not required to provide off-street parking.
This is actually an increase for the building as a whole and the parking requirement?
It is. If you could fill that whole building up with businesses and you would not have to require, provide any, any parking other than what's currently there. But as residential, you have to provide parking for the residential use.
And then could you speak just a little bit about the historic guidelines for everyone and for changes to the outside?
So our, this is a historic district. It's in the Newtown Historic District. Our historic regulations regulate the exterior appearance of all properties, but only the portions that can be seen from the public street. Any portion of the exterior that's not visible from the public street is not subject to historic review. So the zoning administrator is the person responsible for making that decision of what's visible and what's not visible. So she will make the determination whether the Historic Preservation Commission needs to review the parking lot expansion, relocation of the retaining wall. Anything that's done to the front or either side of the building is definitely visible and would have to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. And that would include the roof. Now, if, if replacement is done in kind so that what is replaced, it looks exactly like what had been there before, you're exempt from the review. But if there's going to be any change at all, the Historic Preservation Commission wouldn't need to review it. And I, I do think it would be helpful if Mr. Gussler could indicate whether this was going to be a historic tax credit project.
Yeah, and he is nodding yes. Thank you.
Another, another thing I would note, I presume, Tim, as part of the site plan process, any alterations in that parking lot and retaining wall area? Would have to reestablish any, any type of vegetative buffer between the business and the, and the residential zoning? Or is that exempt?
The zoning is B1, even though this is, even though this is a residential use. The zoning is B1. And there's, on a redevelopment, there would be a five-foot wide landscape strip consistent of two rows of pine trees. If a site plan is provided for this parking lot expansion, which, which we would require, part of that is going to be providing that vegetative screening.
And I, go ahead, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think with that question, we've covered everything, but could you speak to lighting that was an issue that was raised?
So any exterior lighting, any new exterior fixtures are subject to historic review on the front and the side of the building? They would likely not be subject to historic review on the back of the building. Obviously, interior lights that shine out through the windows, we, we don't regulate. There's, there's no curtain or shade or blind requirements in the code. So we, not much we could do about that.
But currently, the second and third floors by right could have residential.
They could.
Anyway.
They could.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Is that by right residential use parking regulated? Or again, because of the historic nature of the building? Like, if, like, if the applicant said, I'm going to put residences on the second, third floor, that use isn't regulated, but would it still, it'd still have to adhere to the, to the current parking requirement? Yes or no? Because the, because it's historical?
If, if it's residential, then they would have to provide parking.
Okay.
Even in the by right second and third floor, still have to provide parking if it's residential use.
So the, perhaps what I'm struggling with most, and maybe you can speak to this, or, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. So we, we've had several buildings, the Beverly, frankly, Beverly Street Buildings come up recently about looking for residential on the ground floor. And almost every one of them, you know, there's a caveat that, you know, that we don't really want to encourage residential on the ground floor on a corridor like, like a Beverly Street. But we have certainly identified there, there, we need, we need more residential. And maybe we don't need as much commercial spaces or some buildings that aren't really conducive to commercial spaces. And I can absolutely appreciate that line of thinking. Where I'm struggling with this specific building right now is we're suggesting that historically that they've had trouble keeping businesses, keeping, let me rephrase this. Commercial enterprises in this building have consistently struggled over the years, suggesting that residential might be a good use. But we heard from multiple people tonight that there's actually is businesses currently in this building. So where's that sort of line drawn of business isn't good for this building, but there's businesses in this building?
I'm very curious as to the current occupancy of the building and the history of the business use of the first floor.
Yeah.
Of the building.
Turnover.
Because I thought that was a very interesting point. And I forget which speaker made it, that there has been turnover, but it has been pretty consistently occupied.
And we did have the comments about, from the president of the Beverly Street Studio School, that they've got 450 students. And even though that's pre-COVID, they're starting up with the classes again. I'm registered for two of them, so. Anyway, 46% are local area residents, which has been borne out by what I've seen in the 25% come over from Charlottesville, because it gets that kind of support. So we do have somebody in there. And it, $120,000 a year in revenue from those businesses that come in. So I'm, it's, we've had a hairdresser in there a couple of times. We currently have a therapist in there. And there have been a couple of other businesses. The sandwich shop lasted for a couple of years. And again, I think that, and there's, yeah, the piano teacher. There's a piano teacher in there. And I like walking by and hearing it sometimes.
Are these on the first?
They're all on the first floor, all the ones I've mentioned. And I'm, I'm, some businesses have come and gone. But, I mean, that's happened elsewhere in the downtown also. So I'm.
As with a lot of these other, other types of things that we've seen, you know, there's always a time factor associated with it and contractual obligations and, and that kind of thing. I, I, you know, I have, I have some additional questions that, you know, would help, would help me make, you know, I feel like a more informed decision. You know, with, with regard to the special use permit for the residential use on the first floor that we are, that we're currently opining on. I'm not, I'm not sure that any additional information, you know, as to the best use of the building or turnover or anything like that, would, would make any difference. At least, at least to my line of thinking. What do you guys think?
For me, I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions at this point. There seems to be quite a bit of variety in how much, how many units could actually go in here. And I'm not sure that the lights from the parking lot, because it's down below the house level, would, would shine into someone's backyard. I'd like more time to think about this, frankly, because it's got a lot of, there's arguments both ways. And I'm not sure this, I'm not comfortable really voting on this at this point. It's much more of a complex situation, and we just got it three or four days ago. And.
I have a follow-up question for what, something Daniel said for Tim. We, we haven't approved a special use permit for residential on the ground floor on West Beverly Street, with the exception of the Arcadia. And that was two residential units in the back with still maintaining a commercial space up front. Isn't everywhere else the special use permit has been off West Beverly?
That sounds correct. I do not recall anything on West Beverly, except for the Arcadia.
I think that was a point in the staff report for the Arcadia is that we've never, we've never granted a special use permit on residential level on the ground floor on West Beverly. Was there?
It was considered one up by the cemetery, but that was recommended. It was. There was one house we did, was it on West Beverly or was it on the next street over? That the, the ground floor was really the basement, so you couldn't see it from West Beverly or something like that. It was maybe a year or so ago.
There was the one up on Lewis.
Was it Lewis? Okay. Yeah.
Where it was one of those, like, two different levels?
Right, that's what I'm thinking of.
And there was the one on Johnson, West Johnson, that was the same thing, like.
Right.
Topography.
That the ground floor was below, like, Lewis, Johnson Street or something. So it was sort of a little, little bit of a.
And again, those are not right in the heart of the downtown area either. So I'm.
So so, yeah, I mean, I guess, again, from the from the standpoint of historical preservation, anything that they do to the building will have to go through the Historical Preservation Commission. From us, from a parking standpoint, it's got to go through site planning and city staff and and it's got to go go got to go through all those motions. From a from a apartment sizing standpoint, they look fairly small to me personally. But if that if there's a if there's a need for that size apartment and they can make it work through the build it for through the, again, through the building code and 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 that those type of, you know, it's got to go through staff through that also. So be it. I mean, that's in some in some ways, like if there's if there's a need in our in our town for what I mean, these look like 400 square foot units, probably something in that ballpark. And you know, I I don't really find find fault in that either. It really is just the, if we're saying that we really sort of discourage residential use on Beverly Street and we're saying that there's commercial uses currently in this building, you know, I that's 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 my struggle. And I don't know that I'm kind of with Scott that I'm not sure, you know, it'd be great to think about it a little bit longer, but at the same time, th- those businesses are, those businesses are going to be there a month from now, hopefully.
I think they will be.
That's that's my, that's really where my struggle is.
And I agree. I I mean, I think that, I mean, the parking actually, the residential use actually will monitor itself because of the way that the requirements work. And of course, the historic guidelines are going to take care of any of the exterior um, that can be seen from the public street. It really is, I I feel like, you know, I've been on this commission for a while and that anytime we have deviated for some reason, um, it has been because of the building itself, the layout. And, you know, either it's got two first floors or, um, you know, with the Arcadia building, it was just so long that really, you know, the entrance for those apartments was from the rear. And um, I I struggle with this, um, especially knowing and hearing from the public that there there are ongoing businesses in there. And, you know, I haven't closely monitored it, but, you know, it seems like there's always been, you know, something going in there.
And we do have the fact that the um, school has been in that building for 12 years and it's been here in town for a lot longer than that. And it has a an ongoing. And, you know, I just I I feel like it's I'm not comfortable with this proposal right now, because I don't think that it's right to take away commercial space that's in a legitimate place, where we normally try to preserve it. To put small apartment built, small units in that first floor, which looked to me like they're basically going to, this is inside the building, but the building does have historic character inside. And it's not going to do anything to preserve that. Those units are going to be so small that I just can't, I'm not comfortable saying, go ahead. I'd like to see um, I'd like to see a redo of the ground floor and I'd like to be more certain that they actually can get enough parking in that this can be a financially feasible deal. I just, I'm I'm not I'm not comfortable with it.
Any other discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Is it? Would it make sense for us to table this and think about and have staff talk to the applicant again and hold this for one meeting? Or would you rather go ahead with the current motion? I don't hear any support for tabling it. Is that?
I would, I would be okay with that. I I I mean, you know, I I think I I think it's an important decision to make. And I I think it it seems to me like we we would want to try and get it right. And I think knowing, you know, having having the full picture could only help help to that. I'd be all right tabling it.
Does the applicant have a just limited to tabling it or taking a vote and moving it on to council? I'm sure you have some contractual obligations and study periods that you have to comply with.
Yeah, we do. Uh, I can maybe answer some of the questions that have come up from the group or I can just ask for your support to make a decision tonight.
So you prefer we make a decision one way or the other this evening?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
And um, as far as like your decision goes, the size of the units and the style is within the guidelines that are usable for the space, whether it's character or likeness or design, like that's regardless. It it is, these size units are allowed in this space. And the interior of the building and the hallways will retain its character. It's not going to be manipulated. It's only the work within the spaces that's going to change, just to be clear about when someone enters the space. Is that helpful from some of the the comments? But yeah, please make a decision tonight, because um, if this is not supported, then this is probably not going to be a project that we are going to be committed to. And I feel bad technically additionally for the folks, because their building is in some pretty serious neglect and it needs to be cared for. And we're excited about the project and we're excited to invest in it and hope that you see it's worth an investment as well for the city.
One, one, one other question. It's it just from from where you're sitting, the the by right residential use on the second and third floor would not be a viable a viable solution or or.
So the the significant costs are obviously the roof. Uh, the third floor is pretty much just an attic. There is, there's nothing up there except for like 50 Lowe's buckets catching catching water. Um, and then uh, the ground floor is what makes the difference between it being a cash positive investment, because that cost to do the the retaining wall is significant. And um, the sprinkler system, because the sprinklers are only currently in the hallways and on the backs of staircase, you have to put sprinklers into each of these units. And so as you divide up the rooms, you're going to have to do additional lines for each of them, essentially having their own line from the main in the center of the hallway. So it's, this is not a a cheap, easy, quick, put some paint on a project. But this is, I'm being serious. This is a significant investment for the building and for the downtown, and we're not taking it lightly. But I would please ask for you to make a decision tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
I was fighting with my tablet earlier, trying to keep it from becoming an expensive paperweight. Did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Gushen, motion?
What I'm hearing, well, if I make the motion, it's going to be to table it. In spite of that, so as I'm.
I I'm, when it comes to tabling, I default to um, what the applicant would like in most cases. And so I would not vote in favor of tabling it.
I hear you.
How everybody else feels about that.
So if you want to make the one that's on the paper.
So.
Well, if it's that bad, we can go ahead and make the motion and second it and then I'll vote against it if you want.
Or you can make the off, the opposite motion.
Yes.
I'll say I I we're all struggling. And with the applicant's um, desire to move this forward and get it before council, who ultimately, so that everyone knows, what we do is we are not the final decision makers. We all were doing this evening is making a recommendation to the city council, who will actually make the final decision. Um, so between now and the council meeting, there's additional time for the applicant to speak with staff and, you know, discuss or supply more information. So um, even if a denial is recommended, that doesn't prohibit um, city council for making a different decision.
Okay, then I'm going to try something here. On the basis that it would not serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that the planning commission recommend denial of the requested special use permit for living and sleeping quarters on the ground floor of 217 West Beverly Street. And I will skip the conditions that were listed in here.
Sir, second?
I'll second the motion.
It has been first and seconded that planning commission not recommend approval of the special use permit. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessaker?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then when will this go before council?
This will go to council on February the 13th. That meeting is at 7:00 PM in the same room.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Our next item, 3C, is another public hearing. Consideration of a request by First Five Cousins LLC for a special use permit for a planned residential development consisting of 17 single family attached dwellings located at 2311 Morris Mill Road. Um, Mr. Heartless, would you please give the Scott report for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request by First Five, First Five Cousins for 17 single family attached townhomes. A property located at 2311 Morris Mill Road. Uh, that is um, located on Morris Mill, the north side of Morris Mill, near the intersection with Essex Drive. Um, in their immediate area, uh, there are two other townhome developments. First Five Cousins acquired the property in December of 2015 and is now requesting this special use permit for a planned residential development. The reason they need to request this as a planned residential development instead of a by right development is because they are sharing, um, they have the parking lot. When you do the by right development, every unit has to have its own driveway. Um, if you're going to have a shared parking lot, that requires the creation of a homeowner's association to own and maintain that parking lot. And there needs to be planned residential development approved through a special use permit in order to accomplish that. Uh, as shown on the attached map in your packet, uh, surrounding zoning is our four high density residential to the east and west, R1 low density residential to the north, I1 light industrial to the south and across Morris Mill Road. Uh, the city's comprehensive plan future land use map designates this area as high density residential. This designation is characterized by multi-story, multi-family dwellings with more than 20 units per acre. Uh, the proposed development contains 17 units in an area that is approximately 1.8 acres. And the special use permit is consistent with the comp plan designation. Uh, special use permit is one step in a multi-step process to develop this property. A minor subdivision plat will be required uh, for lot line adjustments. Site plan will be required to address the construction of the parking lot and the stormwater management facilities. Uh, the plat and the site plan must be approved um, prior to issuance of any building permits. Uh, just so you know, we we have received that uh, minor subdivision plat submittal. We've also received the site plan submittal and both of those are currently under review. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request in its May meeting. I thought that was a long time ago and it would be best for us to conduct this new public hearing here tonight. At that time, after closing the public hearing, the commission unanimously um, voted to delay action on the request to allow the applicant time to address some of the concerns that were raised. During the staff review, staff had concerns with the common area, the parking lot, the stormwater management facilities, um, and who would own those, who would be responsible for those. Since then, the applicant has submitted documents, restrictive covenants for their HOA. Staff has reviewed those documents. Um, and we are satisfied with those. So this is on your agenda here tonight. Staff is um, recommending approval of this special use permit with some conditions. And those are that lighting shall be wholly contained within the site. Light poles should not exceed 24 feet in height. Lighting shall be limited to that which is necessary for safety. Uh, lighting shall not uplight or downlight building elevations. And lighting at the property line shall not exceed a half a foot candle. All dumpster pad locations other than or trash collection areas must be screened with an architectural elements, uh, such as a fully opaque fence or walls or built into the site or architectural design. All construction must comply with the provisions of the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Architecture of the building shall be designed so that the front facade of all built dwellings faces Morris Mill Road. Um, and then number five is that approval of the special use permit for a planned residential development includes approval of the restrictive covenants for the sole purpose of ensuring the association or other entity is responsible for the ownership and maintenance of the common elements of the development, such as common area, open space, any recreational or other common amenities and stormwater management facilities. Other provisions of the restrictive covenants are a private agreement between the association, individual property owners and or the developer and the city of Stanton is not a party to, nor does it take any interest in those provisions, nor will the city of Stanton enforce or litigate any matter related to the restrictive covenants.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Heartless before we open the public hearing?
You said you've already reviewed and approved those those covenants?
Yes, we we have reviewed them. Um, and we are satisfied with them.
And what is the, what is the process for that? I guess as the as the owner, um, is that recorded as part of each deed for each parcel with the adjusted lot lines? Or how how does that work?
Yeah, they they get recorded with the plat. And Ms. Robinson may have to correct me if I'm wrong, but once they're recorded with the plat for all properties, then they carry over to each individual lot whenever new deeds are created? Does that sound right?
Correct. They should be written in such a manner that describes the lots that are being created and that um, the restrictions are binding on all of those lots. And I don't, that was my question is if the um, just a requirement that those restrictions be recorded at the same time as the subdivision plat?
We could add that condition if you believe it's appropriate to do that. I don't have any.
I mean, because it's not a hard, that's just how it normally happens. But it's not a hard and fast rule. There are times when the subdivision plat gets put to record and they put those to um, record when the initial lot is sold. And since we want to make sure that that those requirements are in there, I think it makes it easier for staff to monitor if that that requirement.
Otherwise, it's something we would have to look at before we issue CO. I I I think it's much cleaner if it gets recorded with the plat.
And you can do that as part of the, see, we don't need to put it in, you want us to. And you can do that as part of the see, we don't need to put it in, you want us to put it in?
In the motion.
Well, I think it would be helpful to be in the motion.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? And and if I could, we haven't opened the public hearing yet, so the commission members are just at this point asking staff questions, and then we'll open the public hearing and let everyone else speak. Sorry. Am I wrong? I thought that the.
Technically, until you take your oath, you can't be seated.
Sorry.
But we'd like to hear from you during the public.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm gonna take a quick sidebar with you.
Okay.
But I wouldn't say recorded with, but maybe.
At the same time?
At a similar time or something.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna write some words, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yes, okay. Would you feel if the restrictive covenants were required to be put to record before the first building permit was issued? With before the with that? I'm trying to make it so that easy to track. Or certificate of occupancy is issued.
I think the certificate of occupancy is better because I'm not sure we can hold a building permit.
That's what I meant to say. I misspoke.
Since this is not a building-related issue, I'm not, I'm not comfortable holding a building permit for covenants.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before I open? Alright, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come up and speak.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Steve Driver. I'm representing the developer, Mr. Julian Wells, who's here tonight. And I'm with Terra Engineering and Land Solutions, and our office is are located at twenty-three seventy-four Stewart's Draft Highway. I'll give just a little bit of background on the on this particular development. This property used to be owned by a widow, Molly Wisely. This goes back to nineteen nineteen ninety. And she had a she had a person appointed as a, or her husband did before he deceased, the person, a power of attorney, who actually started an LLC. And he actually signed a plat. But when that property property was subdivided about that same time. And the area that lies immediately to the west side of this property is currently developed as an apartment building. And it uses it uses a shared entrance with this planned project. And back in that day, Mr. Funk, who's now deceased, he was in he was an engineer, a land surveyor in the area. He put together a plat, and that was submitted to the city of Stanton many years ago. And the city approved that plat, and that plat was recorded at the clerk's office. Excuse me. And basically, the development that you see before you today is is pretty much the same as what Mr. Funk had proposed. It includes seventeen townhouse lots and a joint entrance with the property immediately to the west. The other thing I would like to point out is there is another development immediately to the east. This would be similar to that, and it has where it has buildings that front on Morris Mill Road with parking behind it. So these buildings obviously are expected to have a facade that would be appropriately positioned toward Morris Mill Road like those buildings do. And the other thing I'd like to point out is these these four conditions here, the developer has no no issue with those. Currently, there's no light poles planned on the property. So the lighting would be just basically fixtures at the doors on the buildings. The dumpster pads are located in a screened area, and it would be similar to what's adjacent to the east of us, where there would be an opaque fence and probably some landscape shrubs around that as well to hide those from the public view. No, no issues with the Virginia statewide building code. That's a pretty standard requirement. And then as far as the C C Rs are concerned, yeah, that's I don't see that as an issue. If the county wants to add something to that as one of the conditions, that's okay. But typically, C C Rs are recorded along with the final plat or very close to the same time. And then all the people that would reside in that development would purchase would be bound by those documents.
So an additional requirement that those be recorded before the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy would be fine.
I don't have an issue. I don't think there's an issue with doing that, no. Yep. And one last thing, I'll say that the the site plan has been submitted and reviewed several times by city staff, and that's to their satisfaction now. And the final plan, I think there were two minor comments to add, maybe the word private to the drainage movement, which has been done. And I think our CAD tech guy left a legend off for the corners, but we've added that. So the plat and site plan both are in good shape now for approval. Yeah.
Any of the commission members have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
You have to stand up so we you have to be recorded so it can be in the minutes. Are those microphones?
Are those microphones on there?
They are.
So you could use that, the microphone right there?
Well, it's just a simple, I gotta dig now. Simple question, the the last line.
Perfect. Thank you.
Last line of the is states something about the city will not engage in litigation involving the.
Yeah, it it sure. It says, other provisions of the restrictive covenants are a private agreement between the association, individual property owners and/or the developer. And the city of Stanton is not a party to, nor does it take any interest in those provisions. Nor will the city of Stanton enforce or litigate any matter related to the restrictive covenants. So what that basically means is that the city of Stanton is not going to enforce the homeowners association's restrictive covenants.
But is it wise, not just for this project, is it wise to say that future in future, nothing's gonna happen that that require the city to litigate against this, the provisions of this agreement?
So if, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Council stands in advance inappropriately to me.
Well, the the city doesn't enforce covenants unless they are covenants that affect the common area, like the parking lot or the stormwater management. If it's a covenant related, that's more of a private covenant, maybe it's an architectural feature, something like that. The city's not gonna enforce those covenants. They're not part of the city code. And and the purpose of this condition is to clarify that the city's only gonna enforce the portions of the covenant that are related to the city code, such as the maintenance of these common elements. That's the only thing that the city's concerned with when it comes to the covenants.
I still say it applies to tie the hands of future councils that say, what if they did something stupid like, say, you know, people of color can't use these amenities?
Those are legally unenforceable. I mean, you can't have that or enforce them.
You could have it unless somebody takes you to court. I'm not, I don't mean to debate it too much, but.
So just a little history for everyone, this additional condition was done based on, we had another planned residential development where there wasn't something like this, and when they wanted to make changes to that that were purely architectural, they actually had to come before the city planning commission and city council to do that. And that is not the intent and the purpose, at least in my opinion, of the planned residential development. So having gone through that fairly recently, within the last couple of years, when we had our field trip on Tuesday, I asked staff to consult with the city attorney regarding this issue. And it's my understanding that this particular provision was written. The the city attorney agreed with that and actually wrote this language.
Hey, there are no further questions.
Oh, yes. No, absolutely. Sorry. Please. Is there anyone else in? Please, and just as a reminder, if you'll just give us your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrick Garrett. Me and my wife live at one eleven Fox Hill Drive. Our property butts right up against this, our backyard. Our biggest concern was seventeen new units. You get at least seventeen cars, seventeen heat pumps. I'm a little nervous. Sorry. So the noise, the lighting. I was glad to hear there's no parking lot lights going in. This is right against our backyard. So what I'm asking is sound barriers or privacy fencing, things like that, to protect our peace and quiet in our backyard, in our backyard. Being in facility management for twelve years, I know how much noise heat pumps give off, air conditioning, cars, things like that. That's our biggest concern is noise control, privacy, things like that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no one on Zoom at all.
Alright, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Heartless, before I open it up to the commission, if you just want to speak a little as far as site plan and any boundary requirements or lack thereof between this property and the adjoining property, screening, that sort of thing.
So I agree with what Steve said. Most of the site plan issues are worked out. I suspect by the time this goes to council, we'll be at a position where we'll be able to issue site plan approval and approve of a plat once council approves a special use permit. This property and the Fox Hill neighborhood are both zoned residential, so there is no screening required by the zoning code. Now, this is a special use permit, so if you thought there was justification for requiring screening because there's a parking lot against this rear property line, that could be a condition that that you impose. But the zoning code doesn't require it because they're both zoned residential.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff, comments?
I would note that it's not uncommon for many localities to have landscape requirements, screening requirements based on land use instead of zoning in a residential condition. A higher density land use like this budding up to single-family detached could have a landscaping requirement.
That that typical landscape requirement. You know, we have a screening requirement for industrial, we have a screening requirement for commercial, we don't have one for residential. But the standard commercial requirement is the five-foot-wide landscape strip with two rows of pine trees. If that's if screening is the route you want to go, I would suggest you either use that or you come up with some kind of fence and landscape combination.
We got a small question over here, and I don't know if it's for you, and if you can't answer it, me, perhaps if it's okay that Mr. Driver answers it. Looking at the preliminary layout that was included in our packet, it's even on the screen, I can't tell what the numbers are saying. But there's definitely a topographic difference between the parking lot and the Fox Hill lots behind it. And if I remember right, it's about seven foot lower than the lots? Or is the parking lot gonna be higher than the lots? Like, I mean, what what we're kind of saying is is it sort of naturally screened because there's a there's an embankment anyway, going up or down?
I think Steve is probably more familiar with it.
Yeah, I just can't read it, unfortunately.
My recollection from the field trip, it's been almost two years, is that Fox Hill neighborhood is higher than this.
So it's almost fourteen feet, because those are two-foot contours, give or take.
Mr. Driver is going to.
Higher in the back, lower in the front by a solid ten feet.
For our site-challenged eyes, he's got a full-size plat for you.
To be fair, my eyes work. It's just really fuzzy. We got like a scaled-down version. It's probably eight and a half by eleven of a twenty-four by thirty-six.
Probably because it's been reduced to many times. I was gonna bring a half-scale drawing, but I didn't have time to plot it out. But no, those are good questions. Yeah, when, you know, the Fox Hill, the single-family development is higher in elevation. In fact, the the apex of the hill is on that road in front of the houses behind us.
Okay.
So if you can, if you were driving up that street, you'd see the houses, and those are the greatest lower in the backyard of those houses, and it continues to slope down to this property.
If I'm seeing it, it's a solid ten feet to the parking lot, give or take, right?
Yeah. Two, one, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen. It varies from like ten to fifteen feet below the property line. Yeah, so it's lower.
Driving through that parking lot and turning into a space, their lights are gonna go into a cliff, not into somebody's back back windows.
Right. There will be no lights in the windows.
Perfect. Thanks.
Clarification. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good catch, Mr. Heartless.
Also, to the, back to the screening landscaping. Help help me understand the difference between a landscaping plan and a screening plan.
So the.
Is that, well, and and specifically, I see in a screening plan that it's business professional industrial districts, but landscaping plan applies to the creation of any new parking area.
Yeah, the landscaping plan deals with street trees, parking lot plantings, the general landscape of the site. The screening plan is specific to the plantings that are required to provide screening between the uses. And that's usually two rows of pine trees, two rows of shrubs, or a fence and landscaping on the outside of the fence. They're always part of the same plan called a landscape plan, but there's two separate components that we look at.
I got you.
So these, the site plan did include landscaping for the site, but it did not include screening because the screening's not required under the base, under the zoning code.
That's something you guys think would be helpful, given the difference in, you know, land use between multifamily and. multifamily and single family residential.
It sounded to me as if, if somebody's driving in that parking lot for the townhouses that are the proposed ones, that will, then they turn in, their lights will not shine into the window because the houses behind are higher. So I'm not, I don't think that it's necessary. Have I got that? Did anybody pick up the same?
That's what I picked up, yes, ma'am.
That's a pretty significant elevation. So I would tend to agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think the park, the headlights are an issue. I think the, the only significant impact would be, you know, right behind your rear property line, and there's a parking lot, cars parked. I, I think the elevation changes enough that the any, any lights, building mounted lights or any headlights from cars are not going to be an issue.
I, I also feel like is the screen, if we were to screen it, if you will, isn't it an eight foot tall privacy fence or something along those lines? Like, is it appropriate screening?
It's usually a seven foot fence.
So if I got a fourteen foot hill, that's feels like a seven foot fence is not really, not really adding to it.
It would be, it would be, you know, years before the trees got tall enough to provide screening.
So are we?
Do you want to?
You want to read it?
I'd be happy to.
I did the last one.
Fair enough. Madam Chair, if I can make a motion, please?
Please.
On the basis that it would serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit for a planned residential development at twenty three eleven Morris Mill Road with the following conditions. Number one, lighting shall be wholly contained within the site. Light poles shall not exceed twenty four feet in height. Lighting shall be limited to that which is necessary for safety. Lighting shall not be, lighting shall not up light or down light building elevations. Lighting at the property lines shall not exceed one half foot candle. Number two, all dumpster pad locations or other trash collection areas must be screened with architectural elements such as fully opaque fences or walls or built into the site or architectural design. Number three, all construction must comply with the provisions of the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Number four, the architecture of the building shall be designed so that the front facade of all dwellings faces Morris Mill Road. Number five, approval of the special use permit for a planned residential development includes approval of the restrictive covenants for the sole purpose of ensuring the association or other entity is responsible for ownership and maintenance of the common elements of the development such as common areas, open space, any recreational or other common amenities and stormwater management facilities. Other provisions of the restrictive covenants are a private agreement between the association, the individual property owners and/or the developer, and the city of Stanton is not a party to, nor does it take any interest in those provisions, nor will the city of Stanton enforce or litigate any matter related to those restrictive covenants. Number six, the deed of dedication and/or the restrictive covenants shall be recorded prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit for the planned residential development. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Mr. Kessaker?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. All right. That concludes our public hearings. Item three D, consideration of a request by Management Services Corporation. I'm sorry. Hold on. Yes, I'm sorry. Consideration of a request by Management Services Corporation for a special use permit for two oh six Frontier Drive for multifamily use in a B two general business district. Mr. Heartless, will you please give the staff report?
It's okay with you all in the interest of time. I'm just gonna talk about the things that have changed since the last meeting.
Absolutely. Please do.
At your last meeting, uh, the commission determined to table this request. And they asked that staff work with the applicant to try and come up with a, a way to satisfy the concerns that have been raised at the meeting related to traffic on Frontier Drive. Potential impacts from this Vista Ridge development in the county and how that might play out. Uh, so staff did meet with representatives from Management Services and during that meeting, they proposed, Management Services proposed to limit phase one development to one hundred and fifty four units. At one hundred and fifty four units, they don't meet any of the TIA requirements for left turn lanes. And there would be no improvements required on Frontier Drive. So we have altered the conditions to include I can get to it, a new condition that says.
I think it's number nine.
Number nine and then ten.
I'm, I'm having trouble again with my tablet. It keeps skipping pages.
Like a hard copy?
I might. Thank you. I could see that. It figures that the first week month that we go totally digital.
I won't comment.
For a few of us who printed them out anyway.
Would you like me to read nine and ten? I think those are the only two.
We, we got rid of the old condition one and we added nine and ten. And?
I'm happy to read nine and ten if you like.
I can pull it up here. I'll. Number nine, we added number nine, which says that separate site plans will be required for each phase of the development. Phase one will be limited to no more than one hundred and fifty four units. As a result of the concerns related to potential traffic increases on Frontier Drive, the city may require a new traffic impact analysis as part of the site plan review for any future phases. So phase one will be limited to one hundred and fifty four units. When and if the applicant wants to move forward with phase two and the remaining units, they would be required to do a new site plan. And depending on the situation with traffic on Frontier Drive, at that point, the city has the ability, we're reserving the right to acquire a new TIA. And we would require a new TIA unless there had been some kind of improvements made on Frontier. So it all depends upon how long the applicant waits before they want to move forward with phase two. Um, and then we added a new condition ten, which says the entire development should not exceed three hundred eight units at final buildout. So staff, staff is comfortable that this new condition that limits phase one to one hundred and fifty four units is adequate to meet those concerns that were raised at the last meeting, and we are recommending approval of the special use permit.
And the applicant is in support of the conditions as amended?
Yes. Um, after the meeting, and we, we wrote up these new conditions, I sent them to the applicant. They reviewed them. Um, and they were supportive of them.
I know this is in a public hearing, so I'll ask, have you heard any other comments from the public since our last?
Have not had any contact from any public since our last meeting.
Okay. Discussion? I'm ready to go.
I, I, I'm going to ask one question.
Please do.
And it's a, just maybe it's a moot point, but if we if the condition is a hundred and fifty four units for phase one, does, and, and, and there's maybe an old assumption here, there's going to be some amenities, the pool, the clubhouse, that kind of stuff. That's does that need to be mentioned, or is it just assumed that they're allowed to do that as part of phase one? I would assume that, that, that that's the plan. You don't, you're not going to build the, the units without the amenities, but does that, uh, do you understand what I'm trying to say? I'm not really sure what I'm trying to ask.
I understand what you're saying. Um, and yeah, the condition doesn't specifically state that the amenities could be included in that hundred and fifty four units, but that's the intention is that they would be.
Okay.
They would be part of phase one.
And you don't feel like it needs to be added? I mean, it was just sort of, it's really more the, more the, the resident unit count.
If you were going to add something to that, I would recommend it say something that requires the amenities to be part of phase one. I don't think we want a hundred and fifty four units that are supposed to have a pool and a clubhouse and that not be provided with, with those units. So if, if, if we were gonna alter that condition, my opinion would be that it should be altered to, to clarify that the clubhouse and pool are expected to be part of phase one.
If I'm being honest, I was actually thinking just the opposite, that I didn't want the, I was, I didn't want to hamstring the applicant that he couldn't build that stuff with phase one because it says only a hundred and fifty four units. Like, like that, that was actually the direction. I was, I was going the opposite direction to you, to be honest with you.
My concern was that they wouldn't be provided. Um, I, I don't think the pool and the clubhouse are going to have much of an impact on traffic. I think the majority of the users are going to be people who live in that complex or people who are visiting residents of the complex. So I don't think having the pool and the clubhouse included with phase one is, is, is going to be a, a problem in terms of the traffic on Frontier Drive.
Okay.
I don't know if, if Mr. Stegman has a, uh, opinion on that or not, but this is not a public hearing, but you, you could allow him as the applicant to speak if you choose to.
Um, if we're not going to change it, I don't know that it matters, but if he wants to say something to it, I'm not going to follow my sword and nod either.
The other discussion?
Are we ready? I have a motion. On the basis that it would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that planning commission recommend approval of the requested special use permit for a multifamily development at two zero six Frontier Drive with the following conditions. One, a water and sewer engineering report will be required to confirm anticipated demands and ensure adequate capacity is available and help determine tie in points to the existing system. Two, there shall be a minimum setback for all structures of twenty five feet from any property line and five feet for any parking area. Three, there shall be a minimum twenty five feet of undeveloped buffer between this development and any boundary line of the Red Oaks Development or the Betsy Bell Wilderness Park. The minimum setbacks from condition two can be part of this buffer. Four, screening shall be required between this development and the adjacent Red Oaks Development and Betsy Bell Wilderness Park. Screening shall consist of a planting strip which shall not be less than five feet wide containing two staggered rows of evergreen trees planted fifteen feet on center or a double staggered row of evergreen shrubs planted ten feet on center. The screening can be part of the twenty five foot buffer requirement. Five, a public access point shall be provided to the Betsy Bell Wilderness Park Trail System. This access point shall be marked with a sign subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department. Six, at least five parking spaces shall be provided near the Betsy Bell Wilderness Park Trail Access Point. These parking spaces shall be made available for use by the general public. They may be counted as part of the required parking for the development. Lighting shall be wholly contained within the site. Light poles shall not exceed twenty four feet in height. Lighting shall be limited to that which is necessary for safety. Lighting shall not up light or down light building elevations. Lighting at the property lines shall not exceed one half foot candle. Eight, all dumpster pad locations must be screened with architectural elements such as walls or built into the site design. This will be reviewed as part of the site plan for the development. Nine, separate site plans will be required for each phase of the development. Phase one will be limited to no more than one hundred and fifty four units. As a result of the concerns related to potential traffic increases on Frontier Drive, the city may require a new traffic impact analysis as part of the site plan review for any future phases. Ten, the entire development shall not exceed three hundred eight units at final buildout.
Second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and, it has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommend approval of the requested special use permit. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessaker?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so
do you know when it goes to?
This will go to council on February thirteenth, which is the second Thursday of the month. And it will be at seven PM in this room.
Thank you. All right, turning to item three E, authorization for amendment to Title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code to revise references to the recently amended Title thirteen environmental.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Recently, city council amended Title thirteen environmental of the Stanton City Code. Uh, there were several places in our zoning code where we reference, uh, sections of Title thirteen, and we need to update the zoning code so that we're referencing the correct sections. So we're requesting authorization from you, uh, for a code amendment so that we can start to work on that.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Um, on the basis that the amendment would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that planning commission authorize staff to draft the necessary amendments to Title eighteen.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommend approval of authorizing staff to work on revising the city of Stanton code references to the recently amended Title thirteen environmental. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessaker?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I do not see any old business. Is that still correct?
That's correct. No old business.
All right. Other business, the annual reports.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, pursuant to Code of Virginia fifteen point two, twenty two, twenty one, I have prepared, uh, on your behalf, an annual report, uh, for two thousand twenty four. Uh, it was included in your packet. Hopefully all of you've had a chance to review it. If you have any comments, any edits that you'd like for me to make, I can certainly do that. Otherwise, I will send this along to city council on your behalf.
Anyone?
Thank you. It's always a lot of work and it's always interesting to see.
It's fun. Yeah. Thank you, and please. All right.
I have one other item.
Sorry.
And I may be a little vague on this because it's not something that I've been working on, but city is working on a grant application along with the PDC for the Union Town Neighborhood. Um, and part of this grant application, it asks for a support from the planning commission and from city council, and it's also asking for a resolution from city council. City manager's office was going to provide me with a copy of a letter, uh, to share with you. I was not able to get that from them today, but if you all are willing, would it be okay for me to share that with you via email? are willing, would it be okay for me to share that with you via email? And if all of you are in agreement, Ms. Robinson can sign it on your behalf. But before that happens, I would share it with you so that you can see what it is that you're being asked to support.
Absolutely. I think it's fair to say we are all a thousand percent in support of such a grant application and would happily do whatever we can to assist in that happening.
Once I receive that letter, a copy of that, I will forward that on to you, and then I will get with Ms. Robinson about getting that letter signed so we can get it on to council for their review.
All right. Any other, other business?
I just have updates on council, if you're ready for those.
Please.
So at the last meeting, city council approved the special use permit to amend the master plan for the Old South and Southview Planned Residential Developments. That was a unanimous decision. And they also unanimously voted to reckon, or to approve the zoning code amendment that allows alleys and private access easements to be used for single-family homes in cases where the city engineer does not want to issue a entrance permit from the public street.
Thanks. And I don't know if there's anyone else out there. This is the time for matters from the public, so if there's anything else you would like to speak to the commission about that hasn't already been discussed this evening. Anyone on Zoom?
No ma'am.
All right, then I believe I have this right, that our next commission meeting will be February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five-thirty PM. Maybe five o'clock.
Hopefully, five-thirty.
Right, we're going maybe three o'clock.
My first motion in there might be something. So have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, let's adjourn to the caucus room for our...
Thank you.